For the record, I'm Rod Skirvin, President of Broward County PBA, and I represent the men and women of the Margate Police Department. We have contracts with the officers, sergeants, and lieutenants. You have recently made the position of major, which are out of our purview, but they are still members of the Broward County PBA. It brings me no pleasure to be here tonight, to say anything disparaging about Chief Galaska or anyone else in this room. In fact, every conversation that I've had with the chief has been pleasant, and I felt at the time productive. In fact, I was not even going to come here tonight and speak until I was made aware that it was being represented that this was a union ploy to get higher wages and better benefits. And I can only assume, Mr. Mayor, that came from a conversation I had with you.
Correct.
And I have no idea.
Let me stop you right there, and I'll refresh your memory.
No, let me continue, please, since it's my.
No, just on that, because I want to make it clear. When I spoke to you on the phone about the letter you had sent, I said about the no-confidence vote, and you said that it was more of the chief could not get us what we want. And I said, what do you mean by that? He said he's not able to negotiate our contracts to get these guys upper, more money, and be in the top one-third of the county. You said that they were in the bottom third.
They are.
Okay, so you admit the conversation we had.
But that's not what I said, and that's not the context in which that came about.
Mr. Skirvin, did you also say that the next union negotiation, you were going to come in, offer something to the city? If we didn't take it, you were going straight to impasse?
I said, I said, we're going to give you two meetings, and we will go to impasse.
You said one.
No, not one.
You said one. Mr. Skirvin, I'm not making this up.
Well, apparently you are, sir.
Okay. I don't lie, Mr. Skirvin. We had a conversation.
I agree, we did have a conversation. But apparently you've misunderstood several facts in that conversation. Would you like to let me complete my statement to the rest of the commission? Thank you. I appreciate that. Like I said, I was not even going to come to this meeting, and so my conversation with the mayor was misrepresented online. And I feel bad for the people that came here tonight thinking that this was a union ploy. In fact, you should know the union did not even get involved with a voter no-confidence until after the independent investigation was complete. The union did not call for that independent investigation. The commission did. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you voted for that.
I had to.
You have to?
Going by our turn.
Are you saying you didn't want to?
We had to vote to move the investigation. I asked the question at the meeting, and he said we had to do it according to FDLE. We had to do it.
I'm glad you did do it, because the findings, as were pointed out, were astonishingly bad in reflection to the chief's actions. One of the very few things that the Broward County PBA does not get involved with and provide attorneys for for our members are those kind of complaints, hostile work environment or anything of that nature. That falls under federal purview, not us. I had nothing to do with the investigation. It was after the investigation that the members called me unendingly, begging me, begging me to be a voice for them, because they were in fear of retribution. Multiple females of this department feel oppressed and afraid to come to work because of what might happen to them. They cannot come to work and act like every other male in this department does. They have to work twice as hard and receive chore that should be beneath them that gets given to them. If they're senior officers, senior lieutenants, senior sergeants, they are given menial tasks that should be going to junior people. It is incredibly rare for a command staff picked by the chief that's sitting to vote a no-confidence against their boss. That's unheard of, and you should take note of that. Not only the officers of this department, the sergeants of this department, the lieutenants of this department, and the majors of this department voted no-confidence. You cannot ignore that and say it's a union ploy. There is something wrong in the city of Margate. This chief, I met with him when he was the intern. And getting the permanent job, I was more than willing to sit down and help him. We knew that the department was broken. We agreed the department was broken. And we knew it might, at the end of the day, be a losing cause for him to fix. It was a monumental task. Unfortunately, not only do I not think he fixed it, I think he made it work. This is a month that we celebrate in America as Women's History Month. I hope you realize that and what's happening to the women in 2024 of the Margate Police Department.
What's happening?
Read the report, I guess you haven't read.
Read the report our chief just gave us. That doesn't mean nothing, right?
I applaud the fact that he came and apologized.
Not that part.
But he's not going to fix it at this point.
And you will.
I will help any way I can.
How did you help?
But I can't fix it.
You just said that they've been screaming they can't go to work. They're afraid to go to work. What have you done when they were telling you this?
They came to me after this vote, after this investigation. I don't know why you're looking at me with doubt. It's your own employees that are begging you for relief.
When you're done.
So you can ignore them. I hope the rest of the commissioners do not. I'm not here to bash the chief in any way, shape, or form, chief. I'm not here to bash you. But this is not about Joe Galaska, the neighbor, the brother, the father, the baseball coach. This is about Chief Galaska of the Margate Police Department. And what I just saw on the screen, I had not seen before. I had heard there were texts that were extremely offensive, demeaning, and that should require immediate action by you as elected officials. But that was the first time I saw them. All right. If any of you, and I think it was mentioned, if it was any officer that said that about the chief or any other supervisor, they wouldn't be here. I'd be fighting for their job back. There was unquestionable. And I don't think you can disagree with that. And I don't know how you can look at any woman in this room with a straight face and say that's not a problem. And, sir, a month, I find appalling. I'm sorry, sir. I just find that appalling, that that's a month and everything's okay after what was done and said.
I won't say that if everything was okay.
Hold on, hold on. Don't miss one. Don't.
Okay.
I didn't. I didn't say that.
Okay, a month and some training? I don't think that that fixes it.
And I agree with the vice mayor that in six months, if we don't see any changes, we make more changes.
Okay, I applaud that. I applaud that.
Okay, because I will. After the last meeting we had here, I went home, and my niece was looking at the printouts of what was, of what we saw, some of these. And then my niece asked me, what would you do if it was Sophia's name, my daughter's name there? I said, I'd go for the guy's throat.
I agree.
And she said, well, are you going to do this? And I think that this is a middle ground. There has to be, there has to be something done. This is unacceptable. I just don't think it deserves a firing. But it deserves, it deserves punishment. It deserves a whole lot of stuff. I just can't fire him on this. It's, but believe me, I have a daughter, I have a niece. They will look, and this is, this has been one of the harder decisions I've had to make up here in seven years.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your passion, you know.
It's not passion.
Well, it comes off as passion.
It's fairness.
Well, I don't know about that. I think everybody up there has their version of fairness.
Okay.
You seem very passionate about yours in defending the chief, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I really don't. But in my view, what's fair to them? What's fair to her? Look at her and tell me that what you're saying you think is fair to her for what's been done to her. She's been humiliated in front of the whole department. She's a lieutenant. How does she supervise some of these people now? How does anybody in that command staff have confidence in the chief that he's a good leader moving forward? How do the officers, the street-level officers, knowing how he's talking to sergeants about a lieutenant, have confidence in what the chief thinks about them? It's broken. The promotional process that was brought up, that's a good old boy system. That needs to go. And those are the things I'm more than happy to sit down with any of you, the chief, the city manager, anybody, and to help fix. I'm not here to cause a bigger problem. I'm here to help fix the problem that is existing within this police department. It's infected the entire police department. And there is no easy fix. And this chief has had over two years to try to fix it, and I don't think he has. And I don't see how he will moving forward. Thank you. Thank you.
So then, just so I am clear, because I have broken this up into two different parts. There is nothing that would ever make me think that was put in print on any day of the week by anybody at any time would be okay.
Correct.
There's no word, there are no words that I can use for how disgusting I find that to be. So I separated that clearly saying there will be a consequence, because it were my son who did that. After I washed his mouth out with soap, I'd smack him on the top of the head, so he never forgot it. That's my personal opinion. I looked at and tried to say, there's a systemic problem with the department, period. He may have inherited it. It clearly didn't get fixed. But I will tell you that I believe, quite frankly, some of it's from the command staff straight down. Because as I've said before, and I'll say it now out loud, the outs became the ins, the ins became the outs from the other. And everybody in the middle is sick and tired of it. And that's what I think I see here. The people who really were never on either side and just came to work to do their job. And they're the ones that look up and say, this is a horrible place to work possibly, because I don't see an end to it. So are you then saying to me that giving any sort of chance for six months, that I don't know that anything can be done? But I also look at a 30-year career that in some way, shape, or form, I would rather see end on a better note than what's happening tonight. Your thoughts?
You know, in speaking with the people that, at least some of the people that were affected by the comments, the actions, the culture of what's going on right now, I've spoken to them about several options. We're not, we're not here to humiliate anybody like they were humiliated. I don't want that. I don't think that's professional in any, any way, and I'm here to be professional about the problem we have. And like I said, I'm here to help you fix it if I can.
And that's what I'm trying to find a way to do.
I think if you assure us that you will take this up in six months, that's a possibility. Obviously, I think the men and women that were affected would prefer he be terminated tonight.
Oh, I get that.
That's their preference.
I get that.
And I think that that is justified. I think you have every right to do that. And I think it's almost a stretch not to do that other than we're trying to save some face for the city of Margate and this police chief that's been here for 30 years. But I will say this. In no way, shape, or form do I think he is going to change the culture of this police department in six months. And if we were to meet again in six months, I will be here again, and it'll be a stronger conversation. I won't be here to fix it at that point.
I'm going to tell you, I'll go on record saying, if nothing changes, I won't vote to retain.
I agree. Go for it.
What, what do you consider change? Because we had a third-party investigator who's here.
So let me interrupt you before you go on on that, because this is important to your, to your topic. Two things that I didn't mention. You said there was mentioned that there is going to be an exodus. There is going to be an exodus, and I can tell you firsthand why. Because people are coming to me asking for me to help them exit. And I'm going to do that, because they shouldn't be working in this environment when other departments, they can flourish. That's one. Two, I by no means mean this as a threat, but you have more complaints coming. There's more text messages coming, and there's more embarrassment coming to the city.
And you're okay with that?
I'm not okay with embarrassing the city.
What are you doing to try to fix this problem?
How do I fix texts that were already sent, sir? How do I fix that? I can't retract somebody else's texts.
Okay, so you're checking, can we check everybody's phone? Everybody in the department?
I don't know what you're asking. There will be official complaints filed. You'll get the information. You'll have to do more investigations. And when this investigator, if you give her the green light to continue on, it's, the can of worms has been opened, sir.
Okay.
Pandora's box.
It's been open for a long time, Rod. Nobody's done anything. That's the problem.
Well, I think we're here tonight to do something.
Right, how long you been representing this union?
A little over two years.
Two years.
It was a disaster when we got it.
It was a total disaster.
Yes, sir.
A total disaster. You even told me on the phone you loved the chief, you think he's a great guy. What have you guys done to try to fix this? I know us, when I found out about it, I got a list of stuff here that as policymakers, we could try to fix. But as far as if he stays, more texts are going to start coming. This isn't going to end. No one's going to win.
It's already no one's winning. It's not about winning.
So Rod, what is it about then? So when you come for the union negotiation, you guys get your money, the next chief comes in, everything's good. Is that, is that the win?
That's not the win.
Then what is it? Did you talk to me on the phone?
You're, you're combining two different topics, sir, and let me.
What are you talking about, two different topics? We spoke on the phone. You told me out of your mouth. He doesn't negotiate for us. I said, do chiefs negotiate? You said they always do.
They absolutely. We have chiefs negotiate in other cities all the time that sit at the table.
But he doesn't.
He doesn't.
And that's the problem. That was one of the problems you told me.
I said he couldn't convince the commission, the electeds, to get better benefits to keep and attract new people to the city of Margate.
Correct. Now we agree.
I didn't say that that's why this investigation took place.
You told me that was part of it.
No, absolutely not, sir.
May you rest in peace. The officer who passed away Monday morning, I was told Chief Galaska never even met the family. Chief Galaska wasn't going to the briefings. There's going to be.
I didn't tell you that.
I'm not saying you.
I don't know what you're talking about.
But I'm saying there's going to be a no-confidence vote. I was told that Monday morning. Then come to find out, half the stuff that I was told wasn't even true about the chief. Chief did go meet the family. So now your union people here are being told, chief's checked out. He hasn't been to the family. He hasn't done this.
I have not, I wasn't, I wasn't told that, so I don't.
It's called damage control. You guys did it, and you went after him. You went after him when he was vulnerable, and you're going to continue doing it. You just said it.
I just said what? What you just said made no sense to me, because I didn't have any of those conversations.
So a no-confidence vote doesn't have to go before you?
Absolutely.
Okay. I was told Monday there was going to be a no-confidence vote.
Okay, there was.
I think you guys just run it, correct?
Yes, sir. That's it. We just, we provide.
Facilitate the action.
Yes, sir. That's it.
Okay.
It's not us speaking. It's them. Okay. Is there any other questions for me? I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, it's okay. I was just asking what the change is. I hear it's not going to change. The outs become the ins, the ins the outs. You need someone from the outside at this point, okay? But going back to the change, because everyone's, it's like, oh, conspiracy, conspiracy. So in six months, we have more complaints and more proven text messages and more this, more that. We're going to dismiss that too and say, well, you know, it's all corrupt. It was just another conspiracy, you know.
You never heard me say.
When is it? I'm just saying, public people, things, comments, I read everything. I don't comment, but I read a lot, okay?
For the record, I didn't read anybody's response on anybody's Facebook page.
I read everything.
I chose not to do that. I didn't answer phone calls. I decided this was for me to decide what I was going to do.
I just, I don't know what the change would be.
Change would be that people start to see an improvement in the morale and the desire to come to work. And if that doesn't exist.
How's that, how's that going to exist if more stuff's coming? You have a.
I don't care. More stuff's coming. I'm working on the stuff I got now.
FDLE and state attorney.
Let me interrupt you for you. You keep waving that report. That report, first of all, is under investigation, and it's an opinionated report.
It has nothing to do with Galaska and fairness.
And it's basically questioning the report that was done two years ago. So you're waving it like it's like, all the information is here. It's not there.
I can't go into the information that's on it. If you actually read the whole thing and click all the links, it's the methods that they were done and the tactics that were used.
But that ship has sailed.
So listen, I'm going to make a, because I want, on the record where I stand, I want to make a motion to terminate the chief immediately. Not, not a cause. Give him his 10 weeks. And if I can get a second so we can vote on it.
Second.
All right, now we're going into discussion. Joanne, I just want to say a couple of things to you. You sat there and you praised and read your five pages as normal. You handed out your 50 sheets of copyrighted highlighted things. You talked about on and off duty, correct? The morale, the ethics, they should be. Our former chief, do you know the report that was done with the former chief? You familiar with it?
I did not.
You don't know?
I did not read it. I'm the only.
You did not read it?
I did not read it.
So, so you made a decision on a chief without even looking into the investigation, without even going by any information?
I'm not going to read a bunch of things that contain explicit sexual acts.
You read these. You have no problem reading these.
They're not the same kind of report.
What, a penis in the hand is a difference than a, than a text?
And for you.
Where do you draw the line?
And for you to come after me, Mr. Mayor, is.
Joanne, I'm just saying by your statements of what you said while you're basing your decision, you have no problem.
You know what? And I stand, and I stand by what I say.
That's great. Get upset. That's good. Guys, there was a report, there was an investigation done by our former chief. Pages and pages of pictures, nothing to compare to this. The reason what I'm saying is her little spiel she did, she kept, she was the only one to vote to keep the former chief. The only one. You're the only one. However, some text messages said, whether they're true or not, you're going to crucify the chief after being here for 30-plus years.
Why do they have to be true? What he said, though, Tommy, I mean.
So it's not true, then?
It doesn't matter if it's true or not. The chief.
It doesn't matter if it's true or not.
He shouldn't be saying that stuff.
You're right. And Tom, you're right.
You guys got to separate this person didn't get a raise, it, put all that aside. Look at the text.
So in other words, if somebody texts something and it's not true, you base a decision on that?
The chief said those words. He said it.
We're not saying the words, the text.
It doesn't matter. He shouldn't be talking about employees, a female like that, whether it's true or not. I'm not here to decide if what was mentioned was actually true or not. The fact is, that's something that the chief of police said, and you know that if one of us up here said it.
I have no problem saying anything I want to feel. If I have an opinion, I'll say it. Everybody knows that. I have no problem with that.
Then why don't you do the right thing?
We will do the right thing.
Consider to be the right thing. That's why, that's why there's five of us up here.
One month in termination, there's no compromise there. I heard two of you talk about being fair and doing compromise. I think that, so I think that he should go.
So there's no compromise of it. All right, hold on. Guys, I had before, guys, I was still speaking. Hold on, one second. Every one of us agrees here, our system is broken. Everyone agrees there's a hostile work environment that carried over from the last thing. And I talked to the city manager. We have to address some of these problems as a commission. I think the, the testing needs to be revamped. I don't agree with it. I think the anti-fraternization has to come into play. We have probably nine, 10 maybe couples that are police officers that could cause a potential problem. So there's certain things we need to do as a commission. I know Commissioner Osorio has his motion. It was seconded. The public is going to come up, but I just don't want, you guys are going to be able to speak one time. So if we come back to it and there's another thing, we don't want to hear it again. What do you want to do?
If they say they agree with.
Technically, they're allowed to come up and speak. I don't want to hold anybody from not speaking, but I don't want to be here till, I don't mind being here, trust me. What's that?
It can be amended if that's not what you.
Can I just give one comment regarding the motion?
Yeah.
In 20, I just want, this relates to the motion. In 2023, the Florida Legislature, you know, passed a new statute which provides the chief of police with an opportunity to speak following receipt of a notice of his termination. So if there is any motion to terminate, that motion needs to recognize the fact that there's a statute in here and that he needs to be given to your next meeting to come back with the ability to speak in response. That doesn't mean that you can't vote tonight and make his termination effective at 11:59 the date of your next meeting. But you just need to provide him with that opportunity to come back before the termination is effective.
It's a hearing, though.
It's not a hearing. No, it's not a hearing.
I guess probably the easiest way to do this is if somebody wants to amend it, amend it now so we can be on a level playing ground, because obviously.
So my, you know, my recommendation would be, with respect to the motion made by Commissioner Osorio, that he include the provision that the termination would be effective as of 11:59 PM on April 3rd, which is the date of your next meeting. And that during this period of time that the chief would be on leave with pay.
So that's, that's my motion.
You have, that's what I'm going to do.
I will second it.
All right.
Thank you. Joanne, are you on?
Yeah, I am on, because this has nothing to do with the Shaw investigation. So you mudding the waters by bringing.
It does have a lot to do with it.
No, it doesn't.
It has a lot to do with it.
No, it doesn't.
We all, we all admit that it carried over.
By bringing up that has nothing to do with my investigation on this. How can you sit up here and condone this kind of behavior? Commissioner, how can you listen to these women pouring their hearts out, telling you what was wrong? And you're going to recommend six months? It's not going to be fixed. It's damaged. It's broken. This has been on the news. The city's reputation is stained.
I don't condone what he said. I would never condone.
And Commissioner, he would go after their throats, but yet suspend for one month? How can you, how can you go after somebody's throat if it happened to your child and not recommend anything more severe?
Because I had to step back and give it deeper thought.
You know, the chief had the opportunity, and I wasn't going to say this, but the chief had the opportunity to come up to every single one of us had the opportunity to come up to every single one of us and apologize and say something to the effect of, I am so sorry.
I did speak with the chief.
Yes. Did he initiate it, or did you?
It was in my office, I don't.
I did. I initiated it.
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't remember if I.
He should have come up to each one of us individually and apologized and said, I'm so sorry for what happened. I don't know what happened. I, I regret doing it, but I love my job. I love the city of Margate. I will fight to keep my job. What can I do to make this right? That never happened.
Actually, he should have come up to every female that he said it to before he came up to us. And I told him yesterday, when I asked the question, which surprised me the answer, did you apologize? And the answer was, I'm gonna do it tonight. And I said, why now? Why not before? Because I know what I would have done. I know that if this were been me, I would have stepped back and said, you know what? The system's broken. I inherited something broken, and for the good of the city and the people who work for it, I would be walking away and let somebody heal it. That would be me. That's always been me. That's, I can't make somebody say that, but that's what I would have done.
How do you, how do you, how do you accept? And I'm gonna say it. I've been nice, I've used the word untruthfulness, but now I'm gonna say it. How do you accept lying? How do you accept lying from the chief of police? Who has the three lies in the report? Were you not, did you not listen to what I?
Oh, I absolutely listened to everything.
Well, how do you, how do you accept that?
I heard commissioners lie up here as well.
How do you, how do you accept that from the chief of police?
How do you expect it from a commissioner?
How do you expect him to have respect from the rest of his unit when you know the man does not tell the truth? How can you not think that that's not severe?
I think it's all severe.
Well, then how can these people have trust in him?
I'm trying to make the punishment fit the crime.
I think the punishment does fit the crime.
Then I will tell you that I have never met a man who in a locker room wouldn't make disgusting remarks about females. The stupidity here is about judgment. The judgment sucks, a word I would.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go further.
Judgment should never be questioned.
That's true.
And yes, it's a term that I think came up in the 2016 locker room talk, okay?
Oh, I don't, and I don't forgive it.[1621.53]